Councilwoman Crawford.
Here.
Councilwoman Seres. Councilman Reynolds.
Here.
Councilman D.
Here.
Mayor Mays.
Here.
President Urschel.
Here. I'll just make a side note that Councilwoman Seres will be joining us. She said she'd just be a couple of minutes late, so I bet we do plan on seeing her here today. All right, so the first item on our agenda is I'd like to make a motion that we move to executive session based on confidential business information related to requests for economic development assistance for the revised code.
Second.
Oh, a second? From... Is that Ethan?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Ethan, Councilman Reynolds had a second? Let's go ahead and vote on that.
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds.
Aye.
Councilman D.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Urschel.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great, all right, we're gonna go ahead and adjourn to executive session in the side chambers.
So he made the motion? I thought that the president wasn't supposed to make motions. He's not allowed to vote.
He's a voting member.
He can vote.
He's a, he's a voting member. No, he has every right to make a motion, a second motion. He does usually, the chair usually doesn't because they're leading the pursuit.
They're presiding.
Yeah, they're providing everything and needing, but as president, it's, it's not uncommon for them to entertain the motion or make the motion to go into executive. It just doesn't, I shouldn't say not uncommon. It's irregular for them to make the motion, but it's not.
But you remember, we don't follow our rules. Did they kick you out?
No, I, I had not had a chance to tell them yet, so I wanted to tell them before they started. I'm, I'm conflicted out. So until I hear from the- Those are not a match for my friends.
Yeah.
Those are their hair, have you seen those?
So you just get, yeah, so they're magnetic.
They're just, they drew, they have sunglass tops and...
I'm gonna get some of the sunglass ones.
I got, how do you get, how do you get that?
You order them online.
I know, I know you can.
Tomorrow, we're going to the 445th awards banquet.
Oh, good.
And Freddie's my date.
Aww.
And he got an all green suit.
Oh, wow.
My son didn't say anything about it, so I'm proud of him for that. I'm so excited.
No, I'm sure.
I'll show you a picture of it.
Sure. Yeah, no doubt about that. We're just waiting on Wes, then we'll get started back up again.
He should get fired.
He looks amazing in it. He got his haircut today. This is the suit Freddie's wearing.
Is this an Opo suit?
I don't know what it is.
Looking like it's an Opo, I bet it is.
Opo?
Yeah, uh-oh. I have a green one for Dave Patrick today. That shamrock's on it.
Oh, no, no. This is... It's gonna look good. There's a white glasses.
Are we there? Yeah, we're on air. All right, we're back from executive session. Now, we're into new business. First item is Resolution 2024-014, authorizing the execution of a revenue-sharing agreement with the Xenia Community Schools Board of Education for the Market District Redevelopment Project. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to take an extra minute to sort of systematically provide some background, some factual information regarding this resolution. A lot of very erroneous information has been publicly presented. So, we think it's really important that we be transparent and set the context based on facts in terms of what the actual ask is and the nature of the project. So, again, the Market District project is a project that the council has elected to pursue with quite a bit of vigor because of its impact in the core of our community. From day one, the council has discussed the fact and really prioritized the issue of this being a catalytic project, understanding that the value of this project is much greater than just the capital investment at the site, but what it does to elevate the entire downtown and then ultimately the community. It improves our marketplace. It improves the marketability of Xenia to prospective residents and businesses that might look at our community. The nature of this development is contained to five parcels that are roughly in the area of what is known locally as Xenia Town Square. It does not contain this project, this revenue-sharing agreement does not contain parcels outside of those five parcels owned by the city that we have indicated to the schools that would be part of this revenue-sharing agreement. So, the Xenia Towers building, the crossings building, the fast-food establishments along Main Street, and others around the periphery of the site are not included to this in any way, shape, or form. All right? Under the proposed project scope, we're looking at a mixed-use development over two phases, two phases of both public investment improvement as well as private investment and their improvements. The entire site investment is in the ballpark of $150 million. In fact, in excess of that. Private portion of that, about $140. Local, about $100... or, excuse me, private investment about $140 million. Public investment about $13 million. The two phases are broken down such that the interior of the site, to restore the original street grid, to do the water, the sanitary sewer, the storm sewer, all the surface improvements, including curbing, sidewalk, lighting, public spaces, that's all intended to be in phase one. Obviously, we have to do any buried infrastructure before we can do anything else. And then restoration of the walkable community that the community, the city residents have told us they want incorporated to this would be in that first phase. The second phase of improvement is around the periphery. As you would have success with this project, you're going to have impacts in terms of increased traffic. So, there are a series of steps that are necessary at various intersections around this project site that will require improvements and thus investment locally in terms of public financing. What we are seeking to do is to make a local investment to demonstrate for external investors that we're serious about this and serious about elevating the level of quality in our community. What we know, what we've heard from potential investors and developers associated with this project is, unless there is a willingness by the community to invest in this infrastructure, there is not a willingness of these private investors outside of our community to invest in this site. We are going to have to, as a community, find a way to reinstall this infrastructure in order to entice private investors to come and then build those vertical improvements at the site. So, again, you're looking at a two-phase project, both public and private in terms of the improvements. What the tax share, the revenue-sharing agreement does essentially, there are several functions under Ohio law that authorize municipalities to utilize tax abatements and the improved value on property to pay for public infrastructure to then facilitate private investment. So, in this case, we're looking at three things, what's called a Community Reinvestment Area or Community Reinvestment Act area. You have tax increment financing. And you have a function called New Community Authorities, where you would create a new communities district. Essentially, what this would do is take not the existing value, but the improved value and leverage that to offset bond payments for the public infrastructure. We want to stress that under this arrangement, under this proposal, the schools, neither Xenia Community Schools nor the Green County Career Center, have any reduction in existing property tax. This project is relative to only these five parcels, and the property tax currently being generated would still be provided to the schools. What is happening is, at the point that improvements are finished, there's a new property value, thus a new taxation, that is created. There is a commitment through this agreement that 75% of that new value would be dedicated to offsetting the infrastructure improvements that allowed 100% of the value to occur in the first place. The other 25% is reserved to the schools. It's new money. It's additional resources. It does have an effect on their budget ultimately. It increases the revenue they have available in their budget. So, under the proposal that we have outlined, this is an amount in terms of the dollars the schools would get. It starts at a lower rate and continues to escalate and then tops out. Over the 30-year term, the additional tax value that the schools would receive under this revenue-sharing agreement is just about $10 million. It's about 9.9 and change. So, there is without question no sacrifice of tax base. There's an expansion of tax base. Those new tax dollars help to reduce the burden on households in our community. There's also this misnomer that these properties aren't paying tax. No, they are. It's just that the taxes are converted through the NCA as a, what we call a payment in lieu of taxes. Same purpose, but they're paying that amount, and that's the amount that then goes toward offsetting the annual bond payments that the city would make. So, other business owners, other residents or community are not subsidizing this. This, you know, the property owners of this property ultimately will be paying the equivalency of taxes. They'll just be doing it through the structure that we've laid out. So, again, there's no loss of revenue to the schools. They're going to continue to get what they're getting today. There's an increase equivalent to 25% of what the schools otherwise would have been eligible to receive that increases over time. The net value of the increases in taxation at the site to the schools is approximately $10 million over the 30-year term. What we've offered, and as we've demonstrated in the agenda report, the city has heard some of the concerns of the board and responded to that. So, we are including in the proposal conditions that would, one, allow any future voted millage that voters would approve for the schools. 100% of that increase from this site would be dedicated toward the schools. None of it would go toward these bond payments. We wouldn't need it. We've already got the structure that in essence covers it. Additionally, should the project overperform and we have the ability to retire that debt early, then it would restore 100% of what's eligible to the schools at an earlier date than the 30-year term, if that's at all possible. And third, we've heard concerns from the schools that this could create additional burden for the schools that is unfunded. Well, obviously, the schools will get more money from the project. But again, I think council wanting to respond to that has indicated that you're willing to do some revenue sharing of income tax that the city would receive as a result of new residents at the site to help offset that burden if a certain threshold is met. So, essentially, what we've heard is that if there are 30 students that are added to Xenia Community Schools as full-time enrolled students with Xenia Community Schools, that you'd be willing to share up to 50% of the new tax, income tax revenue that the city would get. So, that's city's money that you would get from this that would go toward that. So, we're including that in this proposal as well. So, again, we've tried to respond to the articulated concerns of the district. I think what we've heard in the negotiation process is the numbers we've put out there are solid. We're not asking for more than what's necessary to cover the bond payments that would be required to pay for this project. We've just tried to respond to these other ancillary issues. Again, as we've discussed with council, there is an essential nature to this arrangement. The city simply cannot afford to commit to the infrastructure and the cost on an annualized basis of installing this infrastructure based on the financial resources we have today. These types of programs are very common. They're common in Green County. Fairborn has them. They exist, you know, various jurisdictions throughout Green County and throughout the Miami Valley region. Again, these are tried and true methods available statutorily to us to help promote economic development because it reduces some of the burden from the developers on the front end so they can concentrate on their improvements and ensure some profit. Because at the end of the day, we want and we need them to be profitable with their ventures. If they're underwater, they'll never do a business in our community again. So, overall, we've tried to respond to the articulated concerns of the Board of Education. And I must add, we're very grateful to the board for taking steps to hear us out, for being willing to discuss these matters. It affects all of us a great deal. I think I can speak for the council in saying we absolutely... it's not that we want. We need a close working relationship with the schools. The problems that they face in educating students parallel the problems that we face with service delivery in our community. And we cannot solve those problems either of us alone. We have to come alongside. We have to align our priorities, align our strategic steps, and try to fix problems together. So, we're really encouraged and grateful to the board that they're providing an opportunity to have this discussion. And with your approval of this this evening, we are hopeful that the Board of Education will take immediate action then to commit to execution of the agreement. If we can accomplish that here in the next week, that will set us up to continue with the timeline that we've established for development of the project, which would see dirt moving this summer. June, July of this summer, we would have some of the project elements under construction this year. So, be happy to answer any questions. I think I've covered most of the key points, but if there are other points I can elaborate on, you know me, I'm more than glad to do that. So, with that, I will yield the floor.
Can I have a motion for this resolution?
Mr. President, I move to approve Resolution 2024-14.
A motion by Councilman Reynolds. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Serice. Comments or questions to the City Manager?
I do have one question. Could you, just for the good of the public to understand, could you explain to us a little more about the timeline and why this is imperative, that we are... this is not... why this is an important timeline, honestly?
Yeah, there's also been a suggestion that there's a rush to judgment with this. So, I think it is important to be transparent about the timeline. The city undertook the burden of moving forward with engineering for the site to understand what would be necessary in order to arrive at estimates on that public infrastructure last year. And we've spent the better half of the back part of 2023 working on this. We got to about December of last year and finally had some working estimates that we felt good about. So, you need both the, you need both the cost estimates as well as the prospective revenue estimates. And so, both sides of that equation are what we've been working on. We made some overtures to school leadership in December that, hey, this ask would probably be coming. It was determined that their meeting in January would be a good time to initiate the conversation. So, I believe it was on January 8th, the Board of Education meeting, several of us from the city went and accompanied Mr. Dillon to do a presentation to the entire board about the overall project and made the preliminary indication that there would be an ask for a revenue-sharing agreement to publicly finance the infrastructure. At that point, there was a request of the board that they assign a couple of members of the board to work with whatever staff support to meet with a contingent from the city as a work group to talk about how we come to a resolution on this to advance the project. That commitment was made. We scheduled a meeting for, I believe, about two, two and a half weeks after that in late January and took an opportunity to go in-depth on the why, how we'd approach this, setting up an overall, the conceptual plan, a timeline, and so forth. And they asked us at that point, do you have numbers to share? Which we said, yes, we're finalizing those. We didn't want to get into that yet until you, we answered any questions with the overall structure and process. We then scheduled a follow-up meeting with the board and shared front-line information, the hard numbers in aggregate, and had a second meeting scheduled. That unfortunately fell the day after President's Day and was canceled, unfortunately. And that did create a bit of a timeline crunch because we felt that we had allotted adequate time from when we first started the conversation to when we really needed to arrive at a decision, which was sometime in March in order for us to sustain our timeline moving forward. So, the reason we are pushing to get to a resolution point now is because as we get further into spring, we start to erode the timeline that we've established for the project. That's important for two reasons. One, because the longer we have to wait to line up contractors to do particularly the public infrastructure piece, the more difficult it will be to find qualified contractors who aren't already committed to work, and the worse our numbers will be. Because, to be honest, bidders just aren't as hungry if they've already got projects lined up. So, if you're looking past really April, May to initiate a bidding process, you're really undermining your own project, both in terms of the cost and its ability to be completed on time. Second, everything that we've built out in the way of a timeline incorporates assumptions about cost based on today's dollars. The cost of labor today, the cost of materials today. And we have some inflationary factors incorporated for Phase Two of the project. But the longer we would wait, the more uncertainty there is with the modeling we've done. Additionally, the longer it takes to get those vertical improvements complete, the longer the lead time to actually see this new revenue coming in to pay for any bond issuance that we've undertaken to pay for the whole thing. So, really, on two fronts, there is urgency at this point because of the delays we've encountered to this phase. Again, our ability to line up and get good bids on the public infrastructure work and the ability for the overall revenue numbers and the overall projections to hold true, because as we would, you know, delay those payments coming back in based on the improvements, it just affects our overall ability for those models to bear out. So, again, this is not a new conversation. We've, this has been months of... So, again, this is not a new conversation. We've, we've, this has been months of dialogue that we've been trying to undertake with school leadership. And we had a good meeting this week. We really did. We had a very good meeting this week. We were able to talk through some of these concerns. So, the next logical phase is, here's a proposal. Let's talk about approval of that proposal.
Thank you, sir.
Brent, I would also mention that that meeting was not canceled at the request of the city.
Correct. Yes.
Any other questions or comments for the City Manager?
I do, I do have one question. The involvement of this project, it involves how many parcels?
Five total parcels.
Five total parcels, and, and that's all?
Yeah, and it's less than 20 acres. I wanna say 16 acres. Yeah, just, just maybe a little south of 16 acres. So, you know, it's, it is a very small number, or small amount, you know, in terms of acreage or number of parcels, in terms of the overall taxable area and just within our community. But its location strategically for us is very important because it's in the core of our historic downtown, which has seen, obviously, a depressed marketplace for, for many decades, which is exactly the strategy the council's employing here. We're trying to elevate the entire marketplace by focusing on the core and then radiate invest-investments out from that core. So, you know, again, it's, it's a relatively small space, and it does not include anything that either the city doesn't own in a town square or anything that we have land leases on that are permanent improvements that aren't part of what we've established here as those five parcels. So, again, the Xenia Towers, the crossings building, the fast-food locations, Key Bank, obviously, the church, none of those around the periphery are included here. And I think that's, it is an important distinction because from what I've been told, there were assumptions that it was all the parcels in what is known as Town Square, and that is not accurate.
Thank you very much.
Any questions or comments? I just add that, you know, this, this, we spent an extensive amount of time with our community in multiple forums trying to get a sense of what they would like to see here in the downtown area, and literally had thousands of folks participate in those forums crafting this, this project. And, you know, what we heard was that we wanna get the street grid back in, and we're at the 50-year anniversary of the tornado. And, and literally, it took what used to be there and wiped it off the map. And what we're gonna be doing is replacing a lot of the context of that grid, that walkability, the ability to have mixed use there that was there before, that has not, not been there for, for 50 years. So, this really is a resurrection of, of our downtown area here, and what amazing timing for that. I would say that I, that I speak to myself, but I also, I think the, the rest of the council agree that this is a win-win both for the, the city as well as the school, that, that we are preserving the revenue that they have for all their past levies. We are not removing any funding from any past levy. And I've, I've been over, talked this over with, with our county treasurer and our county auditor. We don't have the right to remove it by state law. We cannot do that, right? So, they will collect for the current value of the properties. They continue to, to collect and disperse per those levies. And that, so we're not endangering any, any, any finances. Although I will say that, that the school system does collect revenue over 18,000 parcels in the city and the surrounding townships and villages, and that this is a, you know, 0.03% of the, of the count that they have. But, but for that very small amount that is there, it will continue to support that. So, we're not endangering any, any current income for any past levy. We've also tried to, to ensure that any future levies that are passed by the city or by the, by the, by the schools would also include all of the, all of the improvements. They can levy those as well, too. And they'll get 100% of the value of the improvements for any future levy. So, this should not endanger any future levies that, that are gonna be passed by there. 100% of the, the income tax, the 0.5% income tax will go to them. And that's, so from day one, when we start construction, and there's income there for that, and as retail comes in, employees there, as residents come in, all of that income tax will go to the school. So, we, we, I, I just would say, I, I believe we tried in good faith to ensure that any risk that might be placed upon the, the school would be addressed, and that's part of the offer. And we, we're hoping that as well as reinvigorating our area, what we've heard from a lot of investors and other folks is that as that happens, this will ripple into the rest of our downtown area, which is, which is, which has struggled over the last couple of decades, right? And, and I would also say that the, the city's looking, doing investment in, in sidewalks and infrastructure of the rest of downtown to tie into this. And we anticipate we're gonna have additional retail businesses come in, do that. As that does, as that happens, that'll increase property value around there. Obviously, 100% of that will go to the schools, and that will also help additional income to the city from income tax from that. And so, this, this, this should be just a wonderful thing, both for us as a city, as a municipality, to reinvigorate our downtown and also provide resources both for us and the school district as well, too. So, we're, I just, I'm just excited and thank you, Brent, and all the staff. This has been a, a tremendous amount of work that has been put into this to get us a developer that's ready to step out and, and, you know, ready to actually start turning dirt. And everybody, I know everybody's been anticipating that, right? Let's start getting the dirt turned and get this thing moving as well. So, I just wanna tell you guys, thank you so much for that.
Our pleasure.
Great. All right. Well, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Serise?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Great. Next item is a procedural motion. This is supporting the application to the Green County CIC for a community investment grant for the Entrepreneur Center project and offering a letter of support to the project with Jobs Ohio for the Vibrant Communities Grant. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, sir. As indicated, this procedural motion would essentially greenlight the city leadership to forward a support for application for the county's community investment grant as well as a letter of support for the Jobs Ohio Vibrant Communities Grant. Both of these projects or these asks are intended to help capitalize the redevelopment of the old Fifth Third Building. We have been working to facilitate an opportunity with an enterprise known as the Entrepreneur Center. That is a regional organization that helps promote small business development, which we think would be a fantastic addition to our downtown and provide another overlay of services to local entrepreneurs that are looking to, to strike out on their own and need assistance in helping to set up a business plan, or some of the other functions that might be new to them in that pursuit of, of running their own business. So, what we are essentially trying to do is to capitalize the renovation of the building, which has a net economic impact on, on the whole arrangement with the Entrepreneur Center. So, we're very excited to support this. We think this would be a fantastic addition in our community. And again, it's appropriate, necessary for the CIG grant for that application, and appropriate for us to offer the letter of support. So, this, this would simply, approval of this item would simply authorize me to move forward with those actions.
Great. All right. Do I have a motion to support the application and also to offer the letter of support?
I will move to offer support and the approval of the application.
Great. A motion by Councilman Reynolds. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by the mayor. Great. Any other comments or questions? All right. All right. Let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Serise?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Great. All right. That concludes our business for the meeting. I'll go ahead and give out a motion to adjourn.
I move adjourn.
Moved by Councilman Reynolds. Do I have a second? A little second. James, thank you for that. Let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Serise?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Great. Thank you.